Let us continue to love one another as Christ has loved us. And I pray, Father God, in the name of Jesus, during this Teacher Appreciation Week, let us all teach this right here in Coffey County and throughout the nation. Let them continue to love each other, let them continue to teach our students what they need to know. And when this life journey comes to an end, Father God, say it was all without the loss of one, this prayer we ask in your son, Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, if I've got a copy of his agenda. But he's getting ready, we're gonna leave a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, would you please?
Mr. Lot, I'm sorry, Mr. Wade. About police. All right, thank you, Mr. Gowers. On our agenda, you'll see the first item is the FY22 budget hearing. So this is our budget hearing, second budget hearing. We also have part of that budget hearing, CARES Act funding, and if there's any public comment on CARES Act funding or the budget hearing in general. So this is our presentation of the budget and our CARES Act funding to the Board of Education. So, Ms. Yawn, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I know you have your dollar honor programs later tonight, so we're gonna let you go ahead and give your presentation.
Okay, the first item that we see here, this is an overview of the FY22 budget, the expenditures that you will see in detail in a moment. TRS and FY21 was at a rate of 19.06%. And for the upcoming school year '22, the employer rate will increase to 19.81%. For the salaries, the proposed budget includes that all paraprofessionals will be at eight hours a day. Currently, we have a few that is still at seven hours a day, depending on their positions. Bus drivers, the hourly rate, the rate of pay would be $13 an hour for any time that's over their initial three hours. Currently, it's at $12 an hour, so we'd like to increase that dollar to $13 an hour. And then also the positions based on our staffing meetings that we held back in February. And in the budget book, there is a tab for staffing that outlines all those positions that were discussed with the principals and directors, as in the book. So now you will move on to the next item that's in your book, is the detailed budget. And I'm just gonna kind of walk through that with you. This is the projected, so if you will see, the first page is Function 1000. This is our instruction function, and this includes our salaries for our teachers and the benefits for our teachers here. And also there is, you can see the TRS increase here, as well as the para-professional rate change there as well. The next item is pupil services, which is your Function 2100. You can see in red, this is where we're using some CARES funding to offset our austerity. And I have coded that in red so that you can see that amount, and that's salaries and benefits. And this is the same salaries and benefits that we used this previous year to offset austerity. We'll continue to do that in '22. In Function 2210, this is instructional, improvement of instructional services. There were some positions added here based on those meetings, and that's noted in the budget here. Function 2220, which is our media, that is relatively unchanged. We had some change in personnel, which actually decreased that function. And then in Function 2300, which is our general administration, the only really increase there is our TRS, and that's minimal with that function. Function 2400 is our school administration. And the changes there are based on some changes with our secretary and clerical staff moving between functions, and also our TRS there. Function 2500 is our business. We were actually able to reduce that budget due to a change in a vendor with some of our reporting that we're doing. We're gonna switch over so that you'll be able to save some there. And then in Function 2600, which is our maintenance and our operation budget, again, we use CARES funding to offset austerity, and we also are using it with supplies and our energy costs there. Transportation, we're using CARES funding there, as well as using fuel for buses to offset austerity. And lastly is our support services, and CARES will be used in a small portion there. So when you look at the bottom, our total expenditures projected for FY22 totals to $69,877,345 for expenditures. And the sheet that is on the screen is our tentative budget, which is our overall budget. And that reflects what we discussed in our meeting last time with our revenues. We went in detail with our revenues, and that is also a tab in the book that shows each category, state and local funds and federal funds.
And that's on the, that's the very first page.
Yes.
You turn it, you know, it's the very first page.
That, the revenues totaled to $69,877,345. So we were able to balance the budget using the CARES funding to offset austerity and any kind of FTE reduction that we had there. So what we would like to do is advertise our tentative budget on our website and also in the newspaper for these next two weeks. And then come back to discuss any, you know, things that we question you might have.
Yes, sir, I do have one question. In the functions, where we see the CARES funding highlighted in red.
Yes, sir.
Where it's not an exact dollar amount, we're just, we're taking that amount of funding and putting it toward that function, if it's not the exact dollar amount. And I'll give you an example, state health insurance on Function 2800, where you basically pay, you take CARES funding and it looks like you're booking half of it.
Well, one of the employees didn't have health insurance.
No, no, what I'm saying, no, 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 what I'm saying is if it's, for example, where it's other administrative personnel's is 98-556, and CARES funding is 98-556. And then right below that, the state health insurance is 22-680, but you're only putting 11-340 to that.
There's actually three employees in that department, three employees, but one of them doesn't have the help. So the total is the 22-680 for the two employees.
Right.
And then the 11-340 is for the one that I'm paid for in CARES that has health insurance.
Okay, so it's a separate line item, it's not a reduction of the...
We're spending that money, we're just spending CARES money.
Okay, well, what I'm saying is, but it's not, it's not... Okay. I don't know if I'm asking it the right way.
I'm sorry. Because the total amount is in black, what the budget would be.
Yes.
And then I'm offsetting it by the CARES, I'm reducing it by that amount.
Right. So, for example, the 98-556.
Mm-hmm.
There's an exact.
Yes, exact amount.
So that's a wash.
That's a wash.
The next one, the 22-680, and the 11-340, you're only, so you're using CARES Act to pay for half.
Pay for, yeah.
And we're using.
Right.
We're using other revenue to pay for the rest.
Yes, yes.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yes. Exactly.
We're just spending what we would have had to use general means in CARES.
But you've strategically gone in and looked at where you needed to put that.
Yes.
For example, some things you could, you could pay the whole line item, others you've chosen.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's all it.
And the way we ride that is, we are funding positions that we don't earn.
Right.
Right.
For the most part.
Yes, that we are on our allotment sheet.
We tried to just use the CARES for positions that we didn't earn safe funding for.
Right.
Yes. And then if you look also at CARES 2, you can go through that budget, so you can see. The total allotment was $11,124,491. And the plan is to use that over the next two fiscal years. So the top portion represents the salaries and benefits and supplies, utilities and fuel that we used in our general budget. That was all, it was offset for austerity with the CARES 2 funding. So that is that portion there, and divided by 2, the 5.8, that is, you know, for the two years. The remaining portion make up the $11 million. That's our summer school program, which will be over a two-year period, after-school program for two years, Chromebooks for students, retention supplement. This is the retention supplement that the governor did that some of the salaries was not included in that. And then professional training for literacy, replacement of doors and windows, and replacement of flooring makes up the remaining of that budget that has been approved by the B.O.E.
And we're ready to start drawing that money down from the state. For example, the replacement of flooring, where you see the $2,427,263, we're going to do the new flooring, epoxy flooring like we did at Coffey High School. We're gonna do that in all the restrooms throughout the district. So in these restrooms that have the old tile and it has the grout that absorbs the smells and things in the bathrooms, we're gonna do the epoxy floor in all those restrooms. So we're gonna start that this summer. We've got two schools we're gonna start with this summer, I think Indian Creek and...
Hopefully, Satilla.
Hopefully, Satilla.
Yes, we've got work in the north.
So, we'll just start knocking those out this summer.
You draw all that money down at one time, or just?
It's a reimbursement.
Reimbursement.
It's run through federal programs, the, Ms. Miller's department, they manage the CONAP, it's called. So it's been approved, so we'll be able to draw all the money. All right? And we're asking the board to approve this tentative budget for advertisement. You'll see at the bottom on the front page, we have the budget will be adopted by the board at the 8:00 a.m. May 24 meeting. So we'll advertise this for two weeks and then have the call meeting on the 24th and ask you to approve. So this is just tentative, we could make changes if need be.
We're gonna keep this separate.
We, let me see how we have it on there. Is it only considering?
I don't think we have to have one considering.
It doesn't require board action?
Not, no, it was not advertised.
Yeah. All right. You just have to advertise.
Yes.
All right. And then I wanted to discuss the CARES funding and let you know more about our plans for that.
Mr. Gowers, I think you can.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. All right. If you look in your notebook on... on, behind the tab that's labeled SPOST. If you look at the tab that's labeled SPOST, you'll see our East SPOST projections there. And you'll notice that for the month of April, we had $673,976.13 in revenue in East SPOST. Our East SPOST did really good, it's the best month we've ever had, so.
Oh, that stimulus month.
That's right, stimulus checks and such as that. So you'll see that our total that we've earned so far, or that we have, you know, collected, is $7,262,437.14. And you'll notice that we are, we've just completed the first full year, so we'll have four more years of earnings on this, all right? Now, how does this relate to CARES? That's probably the question. If you, if you turn over to the next sheet, and this goes a little bit more into East SPOST, you'll see the initial projected tax revenue for our East SPOST. When we initially created a budget for our East SPOST, then you don't have this sheet changed. But if you're looking at that sheet that follows East SPOST sheet, this one right here, you'll see that our initial projected revenue was $28,456,210. Ms. Yawn created and updated projected tax revenue. She took $530,000, that's the average. If we just took an average moving forward, it would be $530,000 a month. So our projected, if you wanted to project out based on that average earning, would be $32,701,460,000 that we potentially should earn off this East SPOST. And with the Hobby Lobby coming in and some of those other things happening, that's probably a pretty good projection. So SPOST expenditures to date is the next column. This is what we have spent. It's $8,685,604.44. So that's what we have spent, and it is on that chart there. So that's what we have spent. Now, we do have to pay bond interest of $1,044,086, or $86. $1,044,086. So we're gonna have to pay that over the next 12 months, that bond interest, which would leave us projected revenue off of this East SPOST, $22,971,700. All right? Moving forward, that's what we should bring in off of the East SPOST, all right? Now, how does that relate to CARES? If you turn over to the next document, and that's titled SPOST 5 Planning Budget, Proposed ARP Budget, CARES 3. And you'll see on your sheet, it looks like this. SPOST 5 Planning Budget, you'll see Math Adoption. We originally were gonna use that million two out of SPOST. We'll be able to use that for learning laws, to cover learning laws out of CARES money, all right? Chromebooks, tonight we're gonna ask you to approve a purchase of $1,200,000. We'll be able to use CARES Act funding on that to help us cover learning laws and instruction and those things. Buses, we're gonna purchase $2 million worth of buses out of CARES 3. George Washington Carver renovations, $1,406,111. That's to improve the health and safety of the building with improved ventilation in the bathrooms, improved bathrooms that will be much cleaner. Kitchen will be much better ventilated, the heating area will be renovated. So that will be, come out of CARES 3. And then HVAC, which is air conditioning replacement there, Indian Creek and Ambrose Elementary School, And then adding and renovating facilities, there's some more air conditioning work that we have in our five-year plan. What schools we've talked about doing additionally other than Indian Creek and Ambrose, and then Eastside, Satilla.
Or the West Green.
West Green, parts of West Green. And so there's several schools where we'll be able to do HVAC work there, and that's that adding and renovating facilities, $4,023,71 for a total of $11,404,000 that we'll be able to use CARES 3 funding for, all right?
Now, you're, you're only anticipating, I mean, we're anticipating that it's approved, it'll be approved for that.
It's been submitted, our CARES 2 was approved last week, and we're awaiting. We, we sat in here with our administrative staff, Dr. Banks, Ms. Miller, Ms. Clayton, some of our instructional people, Dr. Nula, it's about, what, about 12 of us in here? And we went through the standards and guidelines of the CARES and created the budget and such as that. And these are things that we need that can offset SPOST and such. So that's all been submitted. We submitted, what, CARES 2 on one day, and the next day we submitted CARES 3, so.
We did.
We're waiting approval on that, and it should come any day. See?
We've got a couple of webinars to watch, and there may be some additional documents that we have to submit, but we have no doubt that what we submitted will be approved. It just might take a little bit of work before we get it approved.
So CARES 3 would show the, how it would offset the SPOST. And then if you turn over to the fact sheet, the very last sheet in your notebook, you'll see CARES 3 Proposed Budget. And this is, really sums it all up. Speech and ESOL teacher, $500,000. Renaissance Learning, that's the AR program, $300,000. Math Instruction Resources, a million two. CTA equipment, $80,000. Social and emotional resources, $100,000. Technology Audio Enhancement System Monitor and Respondent Leonard Learning, $5,100,000. Safety Equipment, $379,000. Sanitizing Equipment, $110,000. And that's, that's the nice floor cleaning equipment that the maintenance department will have and the steam cleaning equipment that we will have. Buses, $2 million. School Nutrition Serving Line, $70,000. Facility Improvements, $1 million. HVAC Improvements, $5,400,000. For a total of $16,239,618. So that's the potential offset for East SPOST. So just wanted to walk through the CARES 3, CARES 2.
The offset would be the 11,400?
Yes, sir. Because some of the 16 is instructional-type materials, or even personnel like counselors and such.
Yes, sir. Of the 16, too, was that the total CARES 3 funding?
That's what we can draw down over the next 12 months. We know for sure we can draw that. There's eight more million that's outstanding, approximately eight million that they told us the feds have not sent to the state yet. And the feds, as soon as the feds send that, they're projecting maybe over the next 12 months they'll send it, then we will budget that last eight million. So there's still eight billion out that we've not even, that we've not budgeted because we, we don't have the money available to draw, so. So next year at this time, we'll probably be presenting to you another plan for spending an additional eight million.
Do you? Okay, the 16, too, you've got to spend it within a year?
No, we have, we have three years to spend that money.
Okay, but you can draw it down over the?
We can start drawing immediately.
Okay.
As soon as this plan is approved, we'll start drawing. And the feedback that we received on the CARES 2 was very positive. They really liked the way we addressed it. And we tried to spread it out and do a lot of different things with it that'll be good for our system and our kids.
How often is CARES available, how often do you?
It was made available as a result of the pandemic. And so the first round of CARES was last year when the federal government released that money in the middle of the pandemic, and it was a smaller amount. And then they released another CARES 2 about six months ago, and we budgeted that, and we use that to plug the gap in the, in the budget. And now they've released this last round of CARES 3. So this, this happened because of the pandemic, that's a good question. The reason we got this CARES money is a result of pandemic. So it'll probably, this could be the last CARES money we receive. That's why we want to kind of spread it out and do a lot of different things with it because we'll probably never see another ejection money like this here.
Is this what we talked about, of the stimulus out of this CARES type?
Yes, ma'am. We funded some of the, some of the thousand-dollar supplements that we gave. Some of the ones that weren't funded by the state, we funded some of that out of this, CARES 2. So, yes, ma'am.
So you pretty much do anything with it?
Well, it has to be approved, as long as they approve it when we submit. We have to put it in a plan, it's in the CONAP, it's electronic platform, and then we have to submit it to the state. And then if they approve it, then we can do that with it, yes, ma'am. So, and there were some guidelines that we had to follow to put it into there. And as long as they say it follows their guidelines and they approve it, then we can spend it that way.
Move that up?
All right. And this is a public hearing, so if there's any public comments about the budget for the CARES 2 funding? All right. And that takes care of the budget piece and the CARES. School update, we have a video from Westside Elementary School. Dr. Nula, you wanna start this video?
Good evening. I'm Ms. Wendy Gowers, the proud principal at Westside Elementary School. This year has been very challenging, yet very rewarding at the same time. The entire year, our theme has been "Rise Up, Westside," or Wildcats. You'll see that throughout our school. Our faculty and staff and students, our parents as well, have worked together to rise up from the limitations that COVID has placed on education. From the beginning of the school year, with eight of our teachers teaching virtually, and all of the other teachers in the building teaching face-to-face, to now we only have one virtual teacher still teaching students at home. So the, all other teachers in the building are teaching face-to-face, and the majority of our students are back in school, and we rise. From upper grades, they were working in three-man teams, and then they went back to four-man teams as virtual students started to return back to Westside. We rise. From creating classroom rosters from the very first nine weeks, and then revamping all of the rosters throughout the school year as our virtual kids are beginning to come back, we continue to rise. From establishing guidelines to adhere to social distancing and the mask mandates, we rise. From teachers sanitizing the classrooms and the restrooms all throughout the day, we rise. And from students eating in the, in their classrooms for breakfast and lunch, and the teachers have no duty-free lunch. and the teachers have no duty-free lunch, we rise. From face-to-face instruction to at-home learning, there were three weeks that we had to do that due to high COVID numbers in our community. And then we came back face-to-face with instruction, we rise. From fears and limitations placed on all of us by COVID, we continue to rise up and celebrate all that we have accomplished this school year. We hope that you enjoy our virtual scrapbook that spotlights our ability to rise above all uncertainties and the constant change that we've endured this year to provide our students with a memorable year that's filled with growth and success as we all rise up. We'd like for you to, we'd like to encourage you to get your hopes up, get your faith up, look up and rise up with us as we share how teaching and learning can continue despite a pandemic. So at this time, I would like for you to enjoy our scrapbook that we've prepared for you. Thank you.
All right. Good job from Westside. It's nice. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the previous meetings. Take a moment to look at those. Please, as the board will place those on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. The next item we have is the monthly financials. We discussed, see that in the budget session. The first, first document is the monthly financial report summary. See, we're in this month. Fund equity of twenty-four million four hundred and three thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-four cents. Go to the next document, you'll see the monthly financial report comparison, which cites our fund equity that we just discussed. You can compare that to last year at this point. The next document is the monthly financial report detail. And then the fourth document is the EastSFOs report, which we discussed a little bit earlier. Once again, collections were really good last month. Are there any questions about the financials? No questions about the financials, we'll move on to the surplus property. We have several items on the agenda for surplus property. Got some miscellaneous furniture and storage at Ambrose. We've got a warehouse out at Ambrose in the old gym. And then we'll surplus some of that on govdeals.com. And then we have some items in the maintenance shop that maintenance is asking to declare surplus. Get out. And in case you're wondering, equipment like this, old equipment stuff that's not usable anymore, we can't just necessarily throw it away. We have to get bored or give it away or sell it. We have to get bored approval to get rid of it. So that's the purpose of declaring a surplus. We'll put it on GovDeals and see if we can sell it, get something out of it. All right. And then the next item is technology. We've discussed some of this previously. We have the purchase and installation of projectors, an installation of whiteboards. And these will be installed in schools, oh, those schools, Eastside and Westside. And we're recommending approval of the purchase of the projectors and installation, projectors and whiteboards. All right. And then the Chromebook purchase. We're asking for the approval of the Chromebooks, three thousand Chromebooks from CDWG. And they are currently available. And Dr. Nula was very forward-thinking when we started with Chromebooks. Instead of getting the small thirteen-inch screen Chromebooks, he chose to get the twenty-four-inch screen. Not twenty. Eleven. Instead of eleven inches, we got fourteen. And so the larger screens like this is what we went with, like what you have in front of you. A lot of school districts went with the eleven inch. And right now, you can't get the elevens. All these school districts all over the country are getting them, but wherever you get the fourteen-inch ones with this purchase. Environmental sensors, this is the vaping detection that we will place in the restrooms in grade six through twelve. Not only do they detect vaping, but they also detect flammable and hazardous materials and THC, which is marijuana and smoky. Noise level fluctuation, so if there's a fight in the restroom or something like that, something real loud, it'll detect. And also includes a key word, detection. It's listening. So if some child goes in there and says something that might be, have to do with drugs or something like that or violence, then it'll pick that up too.
How is that, how is that my advice?
Dr. Nula, you were in on the demo.
It integrates with the same dashboard user camera system. It's just like a natural camera. It'll send a text and email to the school manager.
Yes, sir. I guess we'll save it as a thumb of the noise. The rest of the first surplus plant over the noise takes a part of it. I mean, they gonna have to get out and check the bathroom every time. Some of them getting there squealing and giggling and, I mean.
It's awesome. So you can adjust that kind of getting where it's set.
Good question. All right. Any other questions about that? And we did talk with the principal of the school that has the equipment. He spoke really highly of it.
I just want to leave talking about the noise fluctuation. I was just wondering if our administration's gonna have to walk to the bathroom and head down to bed to check something out if it's just kids being kids or not. If it comes to problems, just, it just doesn't work for us.
Yes, ma'am. All right. And hopefully it'll serve as a deterrent to keep them from doing those things they shouldn't be doing. All right. We will place these items on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting immediately following this meeting. School nutrition rollovers. We have a number of rollover purchases or bids that the nutrition department is requesting that we approve. And Ms. Lewis, do you want to describe these rollover bids?
These are for hearing promotion, not to be played, to place on the next board agenda for a vote. But we are recommending that we roll, the feds allow us to roll a bid for four years to save the bid process. And we are recommending at this time that we roll the bid with Williams Institutional Foods for food, milk and paper and chemical. They were our vendor last year for those. And we are recommending that we haven't had any problems and we'd like for them to be our vendor for next year. We're also recommending that we roll the bid with Flowers Bakery Company, who is our bread vendor this year. And this is a piggyback bid with Evans County school districts. There are several districts that are on this bid so that we get a better price range. So we are also recommending to roll that bid as well. And we are recommending to roll our bid with Safeguard SR Max, which is our shoe company that sells our restaurant skid-resistant shoes. They were our current vendor last year as well. And lastly, we are recommending to roll the bid with Porch and Pack Chemical Company, which is our cleaning company that provides all our cleaning supplies and also assists us with meeting health inspection codes. And they were our current vendor last year as well. So all, this is basically just to roll those bids again for the upcoming school year.
And this will sit on the table until next monthly meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the student handbook. And Dr. Banks is here bringing the handbook forward. And we met with the middle school administration and the high school administration last week. And some of the changes we had discussed, we pulled from the table. We're not going to change the dress code. We're going to leave the dress code as it was. If you remember last year, we had a lot of conversation last year about the dress code. And we got all that straightened out. And we found out in the meeting with Dr. Banks and I met with them that they were actually looking at an older version of the handbook and not the updated one that we had updated last year. So we withdrew the changes because we'd already addressed that last year. And then also the penalties for fighting on the bus. And we withdrew that change. We just, we've not had a lot of issues with fighting on the bus and did not feel that there was a need to change what we've been doing. And so, Dr. Banks?
And just to add to that, Dr. Eastside, talking to Buddy a little bit this morning as well. Years ago, we had about nearly forty fights on our buses. And this year, we will probably have less than a dozen. And that's because of the aggressive consequence that we have there. So if you, I guess, water it down too much, then things will start to probably inflate again. So we think going into next year, possibly keeping the buses consequence the way they are will be beneficial to our system because it has minimized the number of fights that we once had. So that's, that's basically what we discussed. So everything else from last time stayed the same with, with the exception of the bus and the holes prohibited above the knee. We're gonna keep that like it was through this past year.
All right. If there's no other questions about the handbook, we'll ask the board to approve the handbook tonight. And at the regular monthly meeting.
One, one other thing I add that I present that might need to be cleared up a little bit was there was a recommendation to put the vaping and tobacco usage at level two infraction, but went back and said it needs to stay at level three. Because we're gonna have the detectors in the restrooms. So that, that should minimize, I guess, not having it at level two. They already aware of what's going to be going and what's going to be expected of them. So keeping that at a level three consequence will be what we recommend for next year.
Well, that's, that's, to me, that's the thing about handbook is, you know, we get some of the details every year about this handbook at board meetings. I don't work in school system. The principals and the teachers, whatever they want to put, if they think that's what, what level it needs to be or what that needs to be or how we need to address holes in pants, you know, I'm fine with it. I mean, they're the ones that have to deal with it every day. They're the ones that's got to, you know, go buy that handbook and make sure the kids are following everything else. I mean, you know, we need to know what we're doing. But at the same time, when it comes to making those decisions of how we're going to address certain things, whatever they decide, I'm good with it.
And I think giving them the opportunity to make recommendations for changes yearly, I mean, I think that's a good thing. We try to hear what they're saying.
Things change, you have to adapt to them. But my point is if they decide that we need to change this to this level of infraction, we need to change this to address this, and that's what they all agree on, you know, I'm good with it. One more question I got, every time I think of bus fights and all that, it drops a lot. Do you think that's got a lot to do with also with us putting cameras and all on these buses? These kids know, they know they're being watched. They know if they get in fights, they're gonna be called.
And upgrading. And, and, and upgrading that video management system on the buses. You can zoom in on what's happening right at that particular child. You can see everything basically in that seat. So I think that's really has minimized a lot of our problems. We have enhanced technology mechanism now that we didn't have in the past.
Well, you're gonna do a lot of things with that, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, unless you can see, you can surprise LA.
And another thing about that, my hat song once again to Mr. Ch, uh, Dr. Chan Newell. I think that Gaggle Beach is very busy. I mean, this, this man all throughout the night, early hours. If something goes wrong, he gets our attention about it. And we try to activate a plan to handle those situations. Fights, suicide, all of that. We get that numerous times throughout the school day and sometimes the school week. So, uh, and to summarize the whole thing, uh, we're actually cutting down on problems that our school pretend to. Physical altercations, suicidal ideations. Because when they, when the, when the teachers give those kids assignments and they go to writing. Well, they're writing what they're, how they're feeling. And I will tell you, there are a plethora of our students who are hurting. And being able to have that filtering system, it has helped to alleviate some of our problems within our district. So I want to say thank to all the board members and our superintendent for putting that piece into our system as a way that we try to handle problems. And that's, that's giving more, more power to help kids get to the next level and get their education. And a little some of the bad things that happen from time to time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Banks.
Yes, sir.
Great job. Audience participation. We have Francine Thornton. Wants to talk about a CMAs incident last year. And Ms. Thornton, I would, uh, remind you that as having audience participation. We, uh, while this is a, uh, public meeting. This is not a meeting of the public. And, uh, persons desiring to address the board during a work session should sign the audience participation list. Follow the guidelines and policy BCBI. And, uh, you have five minutes to speak to the board. And if someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively. You or she should first contact the superintendent. And the board will not hear oral complaints or criticism regarding school personnel during public meetings.
Good evening. My question is more like to you, superintendent, to the board members. The issue with, uh, me and two other parents, one of them couldn't be here of last year. My boy's in the fifth, he's going to the sixth grade next year. He do not want to go to the sixth grade because of the officers out there. How y'all gonna protect my son? My sixth grade student that's out there had been bullied. Because of the situation last year and what went on. They couldn't protect her. So my thing of this, how y'all gonna protect him going from the fifth to the sixth grade? I look at the situation with the kill list and the situation with my boy. Being accused of painting and I got three officers at my house and a kill list. Nobody went to jail ever. They come to arrest eleven year olds with three officers. So the way seem to be out of order there. And I'm asking you as the superintendent, because I know you got the email. And I know they email you twice. What is gonna be done? Because I'm not sending my son out there to be terrorized by the teacher, by the principal, and definitely by, not by the officers. Cause he do not want to go. And there's no culture, as y'all say. So what, how y'all gonna protect these three students? Because my boy was bullied. All last year and most of this year. Because of that situation. And he did not do anything. And the other two students did not do anything. But there was not a public apology? There was nothing put in the paper that these three boys did not do? Y'all just slid it under the road. But I tell you, I'm not gonna slide down the road. Because I'm not gonna have my boy terrorized. His fifth grade year was made miserable. My sixth grade out there, her year was made miserable. And it is not fair to them. I send them to school to learn, to get an education. So they can get out of here, to get out of California, not to come back here. To learn, to go to college, to make something out of theirself and go forward. But they cannot go forward if they're stagnant. And that's here. And that's not fair to them. So if y'all gonna uphold them, uphold them. So I'm asking you, Dr. Elise, them boys deserve a public apology from you and them officers. So these people know that them boys did not do it. Because they're still being told that they've done it. My boy don't even want to play football and that's been his goal since the day he come. He got up to be five years old from playing flag football. That's been his goal. But now he will not do it anymore. And it's not fair to him. So I'm asking you, ask the superintendent to protect my boy when he go out there to sixth grade. Because I promise you, I'm not a parent that's gonna sit down out of it. I will not. I'm gonna make noise. I don't care if I have to get on News Center 10 every week, I will do it. And when my, I already, I got one at high school too. And the boy that done it should have been R Y C, but y'all accused them for it. But this man fit to be a principal, not why I'm, I'm there. I will make noise and continue to make noise. So I'm asking you, you do something about this. Because my boy's afraid to go to middle school. I don't want him virtual. I want him to go where he can be around other students and go on. But it's unfair to him. Because everybody has a right to education. Is that y'all mind over? Everybody has a right. So then y'all need to make that note, no matter what color you are. White, black, Mexican, purple, I don't care what color you are. Everybody has a right to education. And I promise you, I will not stand by and let my children be bullied anymore. Because like I say, I know you got the email. There's no doubt about it, you did. And I put up with it and I put up with it. And I know that, I talked to Dr. Banks last year about my, one of mine getting bullied. My daughter getting bullied at the middle school and I'm not doing it anymore. I promise you, I will not.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. At this time, we will move to executive session and, uh, we'll discuss personnel. And we'll also hear a tribunal appeal. Here we need a motion. Mr. Wayne, second. I believe we're gonna go into executive session. Need a motion, come out and take the session.
I believe we take the session.
A second. Press Mr. Wayne on papers. We're gonna turn to work session at this time.